All right, following this meeting's order, this is the City of Rancho Mirage City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency, regularly meeting on Thursday, February 16, 2023. And it is 1:00 p.m. Now, the reason that I am presiding over the meeting today as Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Kite recently had a minor medical procedure. He has asked for a couple more days of recovery before we put him back to full work. So he is recovering well, and we expect him to be presiding at the next meeting. But you have me today. So that's why I'm here. And we will begin with the flag salute. And would Councilmember Meg Marker please lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
You bet. Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we will have a roll call. And would the city clerk please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Mulatto?
Here.
Present. Councilmember Marker?
Present.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs?
I'm here.
Mayor Kite?
Pardon me?
Mayor Kite?
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a presentation. And we have a presentation from the Waste, Disposal, and Recycling Services, an update from Burttec on those services. And so with us today, we have Clara Vera. Clara, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. And Frank Orlett from Burttec. Clara?
That might be a little bit more to my height here. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, distinguished council, Rancho Mirage community, staff and community, and everybody that is here with us today. My name is Clara Vera. I am the municipal marketing manager. I am here with our vice president, Frank Orlett. And we really just wanted to say hello and welcome our new council members to one of the most iconic recycling legislations known to California as Senate Bill 1383. So welcome to the pretty new blues and greens that are in your home. And really, today, we just wanted to say thank you to the community, to staff, for such an epic implementation of residential recycling and organics. We had a lovely implementation. We had an outstanding engagement from our residents in our HOAs. And it was a remarkable way to implement, as I mentioned, one of the most epic legislations the state of California has implemented in over 30 years, which is known as Senate Bill 1383. This work could not have been possible without the strong partnership and collaboration and expectations from city staff. In particular, I'd like to say a big shout out to Ms. Jessica Pullman, who worked very close with us in all of those deliverables. We hope that you guys found the educational material as engaging as some of the compliments and calls that we received from our residents. And on behalf of our drivers, our coordinators that spent many days and many conversations with your HOA property managers, we really like to thank you for allowing us to implement such a smooth implementation to the city of Rancho Mirage and our beloved residents. I'm happy to answer any questions. We will be working to implement several of those articles that will continue throughout many, many years. Rest assured that our commercial sector has been compliant, has been an extraordinary partner in the recycling of dry recyclables and organics. And now, we're looking forward to engaging our residents as we move forward with a lot of the SB 1383 deliverables. So again, thank you for allowing us to be such a strong partner in your community and engaging in your support in this monumental recycling program that I hope you all are enjoying.
Would you acknowledge that the transition in the city of Rancho Mirage was the smoothest and far exceeded all of the other cities in the Coachella Valley? Would you acknowledge that?
I would say that it was one of the most smoothest transitions of implementation of residential organics. And that's really thanks to the staff and the level expectation and really getting to know the community and designing those deliverables to really be easy and fun to engage in. One of the things that was unique to the city of Rancho Mirage was having a sweepstakes where we were very delighted. Frank and Jessica worked on this item in not only supporting our local businesses. So we provided those gift cards to the residents, supported local business. They were very thankful and happy that we chose to keep those businesses with locals. So yes, council member, we are very excited. And hence, that's why we're here today to send big kudos to the community and to the staff and council for a job well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Wile. We can always count on you to make sure that Rancho Mirage is at the top. So appreciate that. Any other council members have any comments or questions of Vera or Frank? Thank you so much, Vera.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Frank, for being with us today. We appreciate the update. Okay, next on the agenda is non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to an agenda item, please wait until we call for that agenda item. So this is non-agenda public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And I'll ask the city clerk to please handle public comments. Kristi?
Thank you. So if you're participating remotely, please press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. I'll start with our speaker cards. We have one. Wally Melendez?
Hi, everybody. I'm Wally Melendez. Good afternoon, City Council Administration, Rancho Mirage. We are trying to install a hydrogen fuel cell charging station, specifically a hydrogen one. And there are certain pros and cons with a FCEV, fuel cell electric vehicle, and a plain electric vehicle. Pro number one, and I got two minutes. Pro number one is that when you charge your hydrogen fuel cell car, it only takes about five or 10 minutes. When your car battery goes on, or an electric car, it'll take you about two hours to charge your battery. Pro number two, your best plane electric cars nowadays give you about 200 miles range. A hydrogen car will give you 400 miles range. Pro number three, an electric car, which is what we're talking about, but it's charged by a fuel cell, has very few parts compared to a gasoline internal combustion engine. A gasoline internal combustion engine's got millions of parts. An electric car has one electric motor. It's a three-phase motor. It has one, no millions of parts rubbing each other. You don't need any oil. You don't need any antifreeze. You don't need any muffler. You don't need any points. You don't need any tune-up. Nothing. This is a carefree car. Toyota and Hyundai are making them. Honda was making them, but they quit. But I gotta make a very good point to you here. Everybody's gonna try to talk you out of putting in a hydrogen fuel cell charging station. It's the oil companies and the automobile manufacturers. So you have two big enemies. There are billions and trillions of dollars rich, so they can tell you all kinds of lies about the truth. So with that, I leave you with this phrase that comes from the title of a movie that's titled "Build It and They Will Come."
That was the last speaker card, and there's no one raising their hand on Zoom. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? And seeing no one, that was the last speaker.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, we will move on now to council and board member comments or reports. I will move from my left to my right, so I will start with Councilmember Marker. Do you have anything to talk about today?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Councilmember Wile?
Yes, I do. This past weekend, we had a wonderful event at the River. It was the Lunar Festival. It was the Chinese Year of the Rabbit. And I will ask for a short video that will precede my other comments. So if you would, Jason?
This is a special event because it's another culture that we would like to introduce to people. Today, here at the River, it is the Lunar Festival. We're going to have lion dancers and the dragon dancers. And we will have karate demonstration along with two bands playing. We also have Riverside County giving out vaccines. We have 34 vendors.
I have a small women-owned business. It's called Peace, Soul, S-O-L, and Succulents. I'm providing mental awareness through plants, and it helps you with your energy, your mind, and your soul.
This is a great opportunity for me to showcase my work. It's important to come out and see the community and connect with everyone.
The reason why we came here is because we saw it as a really great opportunity. It's not just about the business. It's also about the art, our culture.
This is sponsored by the River and the Cultural Commission of Rancho Mirage.
Eric, it is my pleasure to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, and have a great day and Lunar Fest at the River.
I'm so happy. And thank you for the Cultural Commission, for the sponsor, with all their support. Definitely we'll be having this event.
We will be doing this event every year. It's the first one, and we believe it'll be a big success.
The event, as you could see, was a terrific success. I too want to congratulate both the Cultural Commission that sponsored the event and the River that put it on, that did the work. The crowd was outstanding. And I can tell you this, that I talked to a number of the retailers and vendors at the River who commented about the increase in traffic, the increase in sales as a result. And it's another example of what we do in the city of Rancho Mirage to provide entertainment and activities for our residents. We will continue to do this. We do these sorts of things regularly at the River and, of course, at the amphitheater. Our library has activities that are literally going on daily on a regular basis. So it was a great event. And I congratulate the marketing department here that worked very tirelessly, along with the Cultural Commission, to put it on. So kudos to everyone. Great event. And I hope many of you had the opportunity to attend. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Ted. Councilmember Mulatto?
Thank you very, very much. I had the wonderful opportunity to participate at the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival. What a phenomenal event. It's hard to find all the adjectives you'd like to use to describe such a wonderful gift that is here in Rancho Mirage. The Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival is enjoying a great legacy and celebrating their 10th anniversary. For those of you that didn't have the opportunity to attend this year with all the fabulous presenters and speakers, I encourage you, as of March 1st, the passes will go on sale for 2024. And the Writers' Festival has announced a wonderful lineup of featured authors and presenters for next year. The passes will go on sale at 9:00 a.m. And the Writers' Festival is keeping it at $500 for all three days. Secondly, I'd also like to bring to the residents' attention our fabulous library is putting out their new Programs and Exhibits catalog of all the events, features, and presentations that'll be going on between March 1st and May 23rd. Please look for this in your mailbox. And also, if for some reason it's not delivered, feel free to go to the library and ask for a program. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And I have comments to make as well today. So I serve on the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Commission. And so what I want to do today is to provide a report to my council colleagues, to staff, and to city residents on an issue that was discussed and decided upon at the last Transportation Commission meeting. It had to do with a thing that is called CV Sync. CV Sync is a traffic signal synchronization program. And the Coachella Valley Association of Governments has approved budget to install a synchronization program along Highway 111 in all of the cities in the Coachella Valley, as well as along Washington Street and in the East Valley and along Ramon Road. Now, eight of the cities in the Coachella Valley will participate in this program. Rancho Mirage, while we will not participate, we will be supportive and cooperative of the program. And so first, I will tell you about our program in the city of Rancho Mirage. And then I will tell you how we will be cooperative with the CV Sync program. So first, in the city of Rancho Mirage, it's now a couple of years that we have operated a signal synchronization program. And we have a map, if you can put up the map, that shows you that the current synchronization program runs along two of our arterials along Highway 111 and up and down Bob Hope Drive. So these signals are synchronized to a computerized system that times and controls these signals and makes traffic safe, convenient, and swift for the residents of the city of Rancho Mirage. We also operate a traffic control center. And if we can show the traffic control center photo. So at the traffic control center, so Matt and Trent are the two staffers in our Public Works Department who full-time manage the traffic control center. They can see every synced intersection along Highway 111 and Bob Hope Drive. And it certainly is the case that years ago, under old technology, whenever we needed to change signal synchronization, guys like Matt and Trent had to get in trucks and drive around to every signaled intersection, open up boxes and fix timers and so on. So you can imagine the time that it took to adjust signal synchronization in the city. Today, in today's world, along Highway 111 and Bob Hope Drive, they do that with a few clicks on the computer. And here's something else that is interesting and important for everyone to be aware of. At our next budgeting cycle, if approved by the council, we anticipate that we will begin a program that will ultimately synchronize every single signaled intersection in the entire city of Rancho Mirage. Think of the benefits that that provides for all of you driving through our city, and think of the time-saving benefits that it provides for public works staff. Now, the signal synchronization program, CV Sync. We do intend to be fully cooperative with CV Sync. And here's what we intend to do. Along Highway 111, we intend to make right-of-way available for fiber optic cable at the Palm Desert and Cathedral City ends of Rancho Mirage so that CV Sync can hook up through the entire Coachella Valley. We also intend to make our data available to CV Sync so that they know what our timing programs, how our timing programs work in the city of Rancho Mirage. And we also intend to make hardware space available in our cabinets in the event that CV Sync needs that space available. So that is why we operate our program in the city of Rancho Mirage. We will be the only city to have a fully synced system throughout the city as long as budget is approved at the next budgeting cycle. And that will happen within the next year or two. So that is how we operate, and that is why we will continue to operate our own system as opposed to being part of CV Sync. But that is how we intend to cooperate with CV Sync. And Ryan, did I miss anything? Is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, you summarized it very well. I think the only thing else I'd add is that we've been successfully managing the Monterey Corridor with Palm Desert for many, many years. So collaborating with our neighbors is something that the city has done for many, many years. And we intend to do with the CV Sync program as well.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Okay, let's move on to city manager comments. Isaiah Hagerman, city manager. Do you have anything you'd like to tell us today?
I don't have any comments, but I do need to request a recess. The flicker of the light was actually our power going off, and we lost our Zoom connection. So we need to try to restore that before we can continue with the meeting. So if you wouldn't mind giving us a 10-minute recess, and then I will come back and update the council.
Meeting recessed for 10 minutes. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting for... I'm sorry. We will reconvene the meeting. For those of you who are on Zoom, we had to call a short recess. We lost power for just a moment in the building. That cut our Zoom connection. So we had to take a short recess to reconnect to Zoom. So for those of you, again, who are on Zoom listening and watching, that was the reason that you lost connection. And that is the reason that you are now reconnected. So we will pick up where we left off. We now begin with the consent calendar. And I will turn this over to our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman, to discuss the consent calendar and a couple of issues that we need to be aware of with respect to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And members of the council, you have nine items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to approve the December 15, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item number two is to approve the January 19, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Item number three is to approve the fourth extension of completion date for track map number 36809-2, the Dell Web project. Item number four is to approve the third extension of completion date for track map number 36809-3, again, for Dell Web. Item number five is to adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, adopting investment policies pertaining to the investment of city funds. Item number six is to receive and file the December 31, 2022 Quarterly Treasurers Report. Item number seven is to approve special assistance funds to awards to qualified nonprofits. Item number eight is to approve contracts. And item number nine, our demands. And staff would be happy to take public comment on the consent calendar now. If you are participating remotely and you would like to comment on the consent calendar, one of these nine items, now is the time to do so. You would hit raise hand on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Before we do the remote audience, I'll turn this over to the city clerk for the in-person audience.
Kristi?
Thank you. We do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? And seeing no one, and also no one on Zoom.
Great, so we will close the public comment portion on the consent calendar, and I will return this to the council.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So does... I think Lynn Mulatto has an announcement that she must make to us.
Yes, I must ask, please, that I recuse myself from items number three and four of the consent calendar as I am a Dell Web resident.
And so just for the functionality for the council's benefit, you can take a motion on items 1, 2, 5 through 9, excluding 3 and 4. And the full council can vote on that item. Councilmember Mulatto does not have to leave the dais because the purpose for the recusal is her primary residence. And then you can take a separate vote for consent calendar items 3 and 4, where Councilmember Mulatto will recuse herself.
So let's have a discussion then about... If we do have a discussion about consent calendar items, all of them with the exception of items 3 and 4, are there any council comments on consent calendar with the exception of items 3 and 4? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar absent items 3 and 4?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve items 1, 2, 5 through 9 on the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Just waiting for Mayor Pro Tem Downs.
My screen's not coming up.
Oh, okay. We'll get that looked at.
No, it's not there. But I'm gonna vote yes, if that helps.
Josh, right behind you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Kristi?
Okay. Councilmember Mulatto?
Yes.
Councilmember Marker?
Yes.
Councilmember Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs?
Yes.
Mayor Kite?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, we will now have a discussion of the consent calendar items, number 3 and 4. As we know, Councilmember Mulatto is recused from those items. Do I have any council comments on any of those items? If not, do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items number 3 and 4?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve consent items 3 and 4 on the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Great.
Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Mulatto recused.
Right. And everyone will be happy to know that my screen worked that time. Thank you. Okay, we now go on to public hearing. Item number 10 on the agenda. This is environmental assessment case number EA 22-005 and tentative track map case number TTM 22-003. And I will turn this over to senior planner Joy Tsai to present the staff report. Joy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and good afternoon, members of the city council. For your consideration today is tentative track map number 38224, which consists of planning case numbers EA 22-0005 and TTM 22-0003. Today's request is for the approval to subdivide a 4.77-acre parcel into nine single-family residential lots. The subject property is zoned very low-density residential and is located in Section 30, east of Villa Josefina at the terminus of Ginger Rogers Road. On this slide here, you'll see an aerial, and the subject property is bounded by Villa Josefina to the west, a former equestrian facility to the south, an unimproved residential subdivision to the north, and a vacant property owned by the city to the east. All adjacent properties have the general plan, land use, and zoning designation of RL2 with the exception of the property to the east, which has a general plan and zoning designation of high-density residential, allowing a maximum of nine dwelling units per acre. This image shows the view facing north on Villa Josefina. Above-ground utility lines run within the project site along Villa Josefina. The subdivider will be required to underground those lines and poles as a part of the subdivision improvements, in addition to installing the half-width street improvements for the street. This next slide shows the property from Villa Josefina. The subject property is currently vacant with scattered desert vegetation and weeds. This next slide shows a former equestrian facility located to the south of the subject property. And the properties are separated by oleander hedges and access road and overhead power and telephone lines. This is the view across the street of existing single-family residences. The proposed project will subdivide an existing 4.77-acre parcel into nine single-family residential lots and letter lots for common areas that include the private cul-de-sac street and two landscape retention basins fronting Villa Josefina. The residential subdivision will be gated similarly to other residential subdivisions in the vicinity. Access to the proposed parcels will be provided by the private cul-de-sac street off Villa Josefina. The topography is near the elevation of adjacent properties and roadways and is situated at an approximate average elevation of 324 to 319 feet above mean sea level. average elevation of 324 to 319 feet above mean sea level. The project site is raised on the east side of the proposed tract, so that the lots will drain toward the retention basins along Via Josefina. All the proposed single-family lots will drain into the onsite street, then flow west to collect in the combination inlets, and directed towards the retention basin system. The proposed subdivision complies with the city's development standards pertaining to minimum width, depth, and square footage of the lots. The landscape parkway along Via Josefina ranges from 70 to 89 feet wide, which exceeds the minimum of 19 feet with requirement for parkways in Section 30. Two retention basins flank the track, which further enhances the sense of openness. In addition, the parkway features a desert-appropriate landscape palette and a typical six-foot-wide colored concrete meandering sidewalk. Common area landscaping includes trees such as Sonoran Palo Verde mulga trees, along with various accent shrubs with additional ground cover for color. The proposed project's entry off Via Josefina features a charcoal-gray decorative stone paved, black metal vehicular gates and a pedestrian gate. The residential subdivision will be enclosed by a six-foot-tall variegated Tuscany blind split-faced perimeter walls and black wrought iron transparency fencing. This project's been designed to comply with the city's landscape standards and the Section 30 Design Guidelines. The proposed project complies with the goals and objectives set forth in the general plan and the Section 30 Design Guidelines. The project's located in a neighborhood consisted of gated single-family subdivision and single-family residences. The proposed subdivision has an overall project density of 1.89 units per acre, which does not exceed the maximum density of two dwelling acres, dwelling units per acre. Any future development will be required to go through the development review process and must comply with the development standards for the underlying zoning district. The project has been reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. In 2014, the mitigated negative declaration was adopted, and the tentative map application for a 10-lot subdivision was approved. In order to maintain continuity with... in the residential land use pattern of the area, the city council conditioned the removal of one lot and ultimately approved a nine-lot residential subdivision. So with respect to the proposed project, the revisions from the previously approved tentative map are only minor technical changes that do not result in any new significant environmental effect. Some of these changes include changes to the landscape planting palette, the proposed entry design, and minor lot line adjustments. The current request does not propose to amend the project boundaries, uses, or development intensities of the original approval. So in accordance with CEQA Guidelines Section 15162, the city analyzed whether the revisions would result in a new significant impact or substantial increase in the severity of previously identified impacts. So based on this staff's analysis, no subsequent EIR, or supplemental EIR, or supplemental mitigation negative declaration is required, and this project is still required to comply with the mitigation measures indicated in the adopted environmental document. So in addition, staff routed the project for comments to other city departments and responsible agencies, and any applicable comments received have been incorporated into the conditions of approval. On January 26, 2023, the Planning Commission conducted a duly noticed public hearing to consider the project. No public comments were received during the public hearing, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project by 5-0 vote. The proposed subdivision is in conformance with the city's general plan and zoning, Section 30 Design Guidelines, and all applicable requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. Staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request. The Planning Commission and city staff recommends that the city council, A, find this project exempt from CEQA, and determine that the previously adopted MND is still valid for this project, and B, approve tentative tract map case number TTM 22-0003, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions the council members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. And I will now turn this over to city clerk Kristi Ramos to handle any public testimony on this item.
Thank you. So now is the time for the public to provide any public testimony on item number 10. If you're participating remotely, please press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, and no one on Zoom either.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, council comments. Any of my council colleagues have comments or questions on this project?
I'll make a brief comment, Mayor Protem, that this particular area has obviously sat unimproved for a very long period of time, forever. And I think it's great that it's going to be developed into a very high-end, low-density subdivision. So it was well-received by the Planning Commission. Their comments were very positive, and we received no negative comments from any of the surrounding property owners. So I'm very enthused that this project will go ahead and become developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. And agreed with your comments, this is a parcel that we're very happy is being developed, and that it is being developed in a way that is a remarkably good fit, I think, for the city of Rancho Mirage. Any other council comments? If not, I will call for a motion on this item.
I would like to make a motion that the city council find tentative tract map case number TTM 22-0003 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and determine that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 130007 is still valid for the proposed project, and B, approve tentative tract map case number TTM 22-0003, parentheses, TTM 38224, parentheses, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. We will now move on to the action calendar. Item number 11 is Resolution Number 2023, next in order, declaring the city's intent to annex territory and community facilities, District Number One. And I will turn this over to Kofi Antobam, the Administrative Services Director, to present the staff report. Kofi, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, council. This item is the first step in the city's standard annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the April 6, 2023 council meeting. And at this point, I would like to ask the Information Services folks to bring the aerial up. All right, so as highlighted in... bordered by the red lines, the area, the territory proposed for annexation is located on the northwest corner of Cypress Lane and Palomino Lane, and comprises of one parcel total and approximately 1.03 acres. The project is slated to subdivide a single parcel into four residential parcels. TPM 38315 was approved by the Planning Commission on July 14, 2022, and has a condition of approval number 16 to annex into Community Facilities District Number One. In accordance with the conditions of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate annexation proceedings to annex the territory into the district and provide for an expedited approval of the annexation process and the levy of special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for a shortening of the time for special election to expedite the process, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map, and direct the city clerk to record the map, as well as establish the date and time for the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. Let's, at this point, turn it over to Kristi Ramos, city clerk, to handle any public comment on this issue.
Thank you. If you are participating remotely, please press star nine or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on item number 11? Seeing no one, and no one on Zoom.
Thank you, Kristi. Now it's time for council comments. Do any of my council colleagues have comment on this item? If not, I will call for a motion.
I'll be pleased to make a motion, Mayor Protem, that the city council approve Resolution Number 2023, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One, and to levy a special tax therein to additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of special tax for annexation number 190, in connection with parcel map number TPM 38315.
Second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, last item on the agenda is item number 12, fiscal year 2022, 2023, mid-year budget adjustments. And Joseph Carpenter, Senior Manager for Finance and Human Resources, will present the staff report. Your report, please, Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good afternoon, members of the city council. Annually, the Finance Division and with the Director of Administrative Services and the City Manager conducts a mid-year review of revenues and expenditures to identify significant changes that have occurred or may be expected to occur prior to the end of the fiscal year. The primary objective of this review is to perform a divisional analysis of the general fund and identify items that may have a material impact on the current budget. Today's presentation will provide a summary of the general fund budget and highlight the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 mid-year budget adjustments. The current operating budget adopted by city council on June 2, 2022 includes approximately $31 million in revenue and $29.8 million in expenditures. Staff is proposing mid-year adjustments of $2.9 million to operating revenues and $975,000 to operating expenditures, which would increase the projected operating surplus by approximately $1.9 million, from $1.2 million to $3.1 million. The detail of these proposed adjustments will be covered over the next two slides. Staff is recommending an increase to budgeted operating revenues of $2.9 million. Staff anticipates the city will receive $450,000 more in property tax-related revenues, $600,000 in sales tax, $630,000 in transient occupancy tax, $800,000 in development-related fees due to increased development activity, and approximately $475,000 in interest on city investments, reimbursement from the former RDA, and the transfer from CFD Number One. Staff is requesting to increase budgeted general fund operating expenditures by $975,000. General fund operating expenditures are broken down into three object levels: personnel, which includes salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance, and department equipment. Detailed on Exhibit A of the resolution and on the staff report on page 12-2, the requested $183,000 adjustment in personnel is to account for increases in medical insurance premiums, leave buybacks, and the revision of the city manager's employment contract. The $792,000 increase in the operations and maintenance object level is comprised of budget adjustments in six divisions. A $90,000 increase in building and safety for plan check services and professional technical support, a $450,000 increase in public safety to reflect the increase in patrol hours and additional motorcycle deputy approved by the city council on October 6, 2022, a $25,000 request in emergency services for emergency supplies, a $105,000 increase in general government for increased insurance premiums, a $70,000 request for information services for SaaS migration, firewall maintenance, and hosting fees, and an increase of $52,000 in special programs for the speaker series. The general fund summary shows the impact of the proposed budget adjustments to the general fund. In addition to the previously discussed operating budget adjustments, there is also a $2.95 million non-operating budget adjustment to reflect the city's share of the city council's previously approved turf rebate program. As highlighted on your screen in green, the adopted general fund budget, including both operating and non-operating budgets, projected a surplus of approximately $1.23 million. The budget adjustments discussed today intend to decrease the surplus by approximately $970,000, resulting in a revised surplus estimate of approximately $266,000. In addition to the general fund budget adjustments, staff is recommending nine budget adjustments to various special revenue funds, a $70,000 increase in transient occupancy tax revenue, and a $50,000 increase in event sponsorship in the marketing fund, an increase of roughly $113,000 in insurance and bonds to account for higher insurance premiums in the fire, library, and housing authority funds, an increase of about $433,000 in the recycling program fund for the BRTAC rate stabilization approved by the city council on June 16, 2022, and a total of $1.05 million in property improvements at Parkview Villas, Whispering Waters, and Santa Rosa Villas. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration this afternoon. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you for your report, Joseph. And I'll now turn this over to city clerk Kristi Ramos to handle any public comment on Joseph's report.
Thank you. So if you're participating remotely, please press star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on agenda item number 12? Seeing no one, and there's no one on Zoom either.
Thank you, Kristi. And now it's time for council comments. Does anyone have comments to make? Ted, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. First, I want to thank Joseph and Kofi for doing the legwork on this, putting it all together. It's just an outstanding report, in addition to, obviously, the staff that puts their energies into producing the results. When you look at this report, you take into consideration the fact that we have invested, you know, approximately $3 million in a turf conversion program that is estimated to save 75 million gallons per year in evaporation as a result of changing the type of landscaping in our city. After that investment, we will still end up with a reserve balance of close to $70 million. And again, I can't emphasize enough the comments that oftentimes are made is why does a city need to have that large a reserve? Keeping in mind, this reserve is not just cash sitting in a bank account waiting to be used. Those reserves are allocated among various categories, such as operations, maintenance, capital improvements, and so forth. And again, we would not have been able to rescue those in need during the COVID pandemic and kept alive many of the retailers, particularly the restaurants, if we didn't have this financial muscle. So again, Kofi, Joseph, great job. We can all be very proud that we're in a position and that our job is to maintain this level of excellence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. Anyone else? I do. I'm sorry. Go ahead. City manager?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I just, again, I want to echo my appreciation for Kofi and Joseph. They do a great job, not just during these for Kofi and Joseph. They do a great job, not just during these presentations, but really throughout the year of giving accurate information to me, department directors, and to the council. So great job on this, guys. You know, just to kind of add on to some of the comments by Councilmember Weil, you know, the other significant item from an expenditure side that the City Council took the step of doing was adding police officers into our community. And, you know, going back to being fiscally prudent and fiscally sound, being able to do things like that is where it matters. So I just wanted to thank the council for their dedication to the community. You know, unique things like the turf rebate program. There were numerous other cities within the valley that copied that program based off the lead from this city. So that program didn't just save, now the estimates, probably about 80 million gallons of water per year, plus all the other cities that copied this program. Now they're saving water in their community as well. And so I just wanted to thank the council for, you know, your stewardship over this process and over the city because you combine many things in a budget process. There are many priorities, and although that was a concise presentation, you've all seen our actual budget. It's hundreds of pages long, it's balancing many priorities. And so, you know, with the addition of some additional police officers in the turf rebate program, we still have a positive result for our general fund, which is fantastic. So thank you, Kofi and Joseph, for your presentation and your help to me and the directors during that process. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Isaiah. So I've got one additional comment to add to Ted's and to Isaiah's with respect to saving roughly 80 million gallons of water annually because of the turf rebate program. We've talked about this before, but one of the ways to somewhat put that in perspective is we all know that there have been some conversations from some of our residents about the Crystal Lagoon at Cotino. That Crystal Lagoon will use approximately 24 to 25 million gallons a year in replacement water to replace water lost through evaporation. So this single program that we have put together in the city of Rancho Mirage that we've approved with respect to turf rebate will result in saving on an annual basis more than three times the water that will be lost through evaporation in that Crystal Lagoon. So I think that's important for all of us to bear in mind. And I do have a question. I just want to make sure that I believe I understand the numbers correctly, but Joseph, so the projected operating surplus is close to 3.2 million once we add in non-operating expenses. For example, that which we've just talked about, almost $3 million for the turf rebate program, we end up with a surplus, still a surplus, but it reduces down to what, about $200,000 or $300,000? Do I read that correctly?
That is correct, Mayor Protem.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate, and I wanted to point that out as well, that this city is doing so well that we find ways to incorporate programs that help all of our residents, like the turf rebate program. But to again expand on Councilmember Weil's comments, we are still remarkably financially secure in this city. Any other comments about this issue? Okay, I will call for a motion to approve Joseph's fiscal year 2022/2023 mid-year budget adjustment.
I'll move to approve the budget adjustment.
Second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you, Kristi, and that brings us to the end of our regular agenda, and I will call on the city attorney to summarize the issues that we will discuss in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The council at this point is going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the following cases: Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage et al. versus the city of Rancho Mirage; vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage versus the city of Rancho Mirage; Wendy Hope Heckman versus the city of Rancho Mirage; the fourth case, we don't have the name specified since disclosure would jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. The final matter that we're going to discuss in closed session is going to be to confer of legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation, and that's going to be pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. That involves one potential case. So those are the items we'll be discussing.
Thank you, Steve, and we are recessed into closed session. All right, thanks, Josh. All right, we will reconvene the meeting. Would the city attorney please provide a closed session report?
Mr. Protem, Mayor Protem, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Steve. Meeting is adjourned.